It's seven o'clock, may we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Stevens, trustee Myers, trustee Compton, trustee Landwehr, trustee Swenson, trustee Waschler, president Fannerstall.
Here.
Please rise, Ann Waschler will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, if there are any public comments for items that are not on tonight's agenda, please step to the podium, and there are none. The first item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to approve the village board minutes of the October 9th, 2017 meeting.
I second.
It's been moved then second, and any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Evstein.
That motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is consideration of a motion to approve vouchers for payment in the amount of $103,686.65.
I move we pay the bills for $103,686.65.
Second.
Been moved then second, and any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Evstein.
That motion is carried. Next items are consideration of actions related to the licenses and permits. We have consideration of applications for operators, bartender licenses with a term ending June 30th, 2018. These licenses are for Logan Singleton, Jordan McGinnis, Isabel Herdman, Samantha Schreiner, and Cassandra Schley.
I so move.
Second.
It's been moved then seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Those licenses are granted. Next we will have the, we're gonna have a public hearing on the proposed 2018 village budget, including the general fund, water, and sewer utility funds, debt service, and all other revenue and expenditure funds with consideration of adoption of the budget at the November 13th, 2017 village board meeting, which is the next meeting.
Alright, I'll give you guys just a quick background summary, a quick run-through of what we've been talking about at the previous meetings. The general fund expenditures that we have are $7,725,000. The actual general fund levy portion of that is $4,454,624. The overall levy, including debt, is currently $5,832,097. Remember, that number will change when the borrowing is finalized in November, December. That borrowing, we won't know until, oh, I think it's actually set to sell on the 13th. So we will have the exact figures of that borrowing that morning, so the budget will change for the next meeting, and it will change by that, for sure. The anticipated mill rate change will be no more than 30 cents per thousand of value for taxes. The number could be less, depending on use of fund balance, use of impact fees, anything of that nature.
Thirty cents a thousand.
That's the maximum we would be looking at. There is no water rate increase in the budget. There is a 5% sewer rate increase, which equates to about a $20 per year average per household for 18,000 gallon user. There is no garbage fee increase. And just a reminder, Dave Cox, Dave Dean and I are working on the additions, the other paramedics that you guys wanted to see. We will have options for that at the November 13th meeting. We're still finalizing that, trying to get control of what all the costs are, what revenue or what expenditure sources that money will be taken from.
Question on the garbage?
Yeah.
When is that contract up?
I wanna say it was either a five to seven-year contract, and we just signed it two years ago.
Okay, I didn't know.
So I think it still has a couple of years.
So does that long? Okay.
Does that still have the fuel adjustment in there?
I believe it does, and that's really benefited the plan, and I know, just looking at Dave, it's something we felt, hold that rate where it is, because that fund, it does have fund balance, and we do receive some grant money that goes there. So the goal would be looking into the future, so that we don't have five or $10 rate increases, keep it where it is right now, and if we have to in the future, minimally increase it.
And the water now is with no increase?
Water can't. We have to have a full year of the rates, so as of December 16th of this year, I can look at the PSC website and put in our numbers. Well, I actually can't even do it then, I have to wait until our numbers are audited, so next March or April, we'll put in our numbers and see what they say, if they deem that we should go for a simplified rate increase or not. Doesn't mean I want one or we're gonna do one, just lets us know that our numbers are looking good, or they still see improvement. So, and we won't be able to do that until probably April of 2018.
So that's a year from the time?
No, just six months from now, we'll look at it, or whatever, what month, yeah, about six, seven months from now, we'll look at that, see if we even could do a rate increase. If we did that rate increase, it would be December of 2018. So it's at least a year off. So that's kind of a quick overview, and I will, if you guys have any more questions, otherwise I'll let the public take it from here.
So at this time, we will open the, is there any other questions for Ryan? We're good on that. So at this time, we're gonna open the public hearing on the budget, so if there are anybody that wanna speak to that, and no one does, so we will close the public hearing. Obviously, as that stated, we will look into voting on that November 13th. So the next item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to accept the environmental corridor and open space task force report.
Good evening, Mike Iger, Works Director. After the village board created the environmental corridor open space task force, we had seven people on a task force that met once a month from last year until just recently. With us tonight, we have Dave Pride, Carol Zahorek, Tim Holquist, and our chairperson, David DeCoursey-Bauer. Our chairperson will make a brief overview of the task force, and will be available for any questions that the board might have.
Dave DeCoursey-Bauer, 515 East Capital Drive. And I would also like to recognize a couple of other folks that served on the task force as well. There's also Courtney Marshalek, as well as Michelle Bonas, who, you know, helped us each month over the last year or so, pulling together this report. And really, you know, the whole purpose of the Ecos Task Force, which is laid out in the, in the report, is that, you know, really it was to identify, evaluate, and plan for the protection of the environmental corridors and other natural areas in the village. And really, the report is the summation and summary of a lot of work that happened over the course of the year, and tried to keep it nice and simple and straightforward with some common sense, pragmatic approaches to managing these areas. The first thing that we did really was identify which properties within the village had environmental corridors and other, you know, natural areas, isolated natural resource areas, things like that. And really, there were three categories of land that were identified, the first being village-owned properties, the next being land that was owned by other non-governmental organizations like the ISH Trail Alliance, the Waukesha County Land Conservancy, things like that. And then obviously, there is private lands that are also owned in the village that have environmental corridors. And really, the focus of our attention was mostly on those seven village-owned properties that had significant quantities of environmental corridors in them, as well as the two, what we call conservation areas, essentially Cottonwood Wayside as well as Maple Avenue Wayside. And really, what we did was we evaluated each of those areas. All of the committee members essentially went to each of the areas, looked and toured them, and then we had, you know, some good discussion about what our observations were. And really, it was about answering three questions. One, what is the current condition in terms of their environmental features, some of the recreational features, trails, paths, things like that, you know, scenic overlooks, as well as what the adjacent land uses are. And you'll see in the report, for each of those areas, that's how the report is kind of broken out, so it's nice and consistent. Then, we identified and discussed, well, what are some of the opportunity uses that we see? How could some of these areas be actually better used? And how could some of these areas be improved to provide either additional recreational amenities to the village, you know, residents and other folks, as well as, you know, other opportunity uses? And then finally, after sort of going through that process, okay, what actions do we recommend for each of these areas? And that's essentially what the summary is. We also discussed, you know, how to approach private lands. Obviously, those are lands that are controlled by the public at large, we obviously want to engage with them, notify folks that they have property that includes those areas, and provide sort of a friendly letter that essentially says, you know, it's, here's some good things that, you know, and benefits that come from owning this kind of a land, but obviously, we're not going to try to force anyone to do anything on their own particular property. So that's the approach we kind of took with that. And really, the three main recommendations that came out, we did look at the Waukesha County Code for Environmental Corridors, and I've attached a copy of that to the recommendations, is to revisit the Village of Haaland code, see if there's some things that we could do to improve our current code to protect these areas, some common sense things, for example, not, you know, prohibiting, you know, cutting down trees and things like that, or degradation of those areas, encroachment into them, you know, without prior consent authorization, things like that, in accordance with zoning. The second is to extend the term of the committee. There was a sense that, you know, we've kind of got a good plan in place here now, we need to kind of carry this forward, take some of the next steps, the actions, the, you know, and that really then sort of ties into the third, which is implement some of the actions. Now, I'll tell you, it's a big challenge to manage these areas. There is a lot of work that needs to be done if, you know, you wanted to achieve this sort of ideal conditions. We obviously wanna focus our efforts on where we think we can get the best impact, and so the focus was really on Pembroke Park. It's the most significant area, it's the largest area, and it's also, in our opinion, the most underutilized area that could benefit from some focused actions, doing some select clearing, open up the natural areas, which are really outstanding, to trails, walking paths, things like that, so that village residents can take advantage of those areas. We've got some great parks there, in terms of the ballfields and the playsets, it's, you know, it would just add to the usability of those conservation areas that are out there, and improve the quality of those areas. I did also include, you know, at the front, or we did also include at the front, you know, an explanation of what the environmental corridors are, some of the benefits that are associated with them, and rather than recreating the wheel on exactly all that information, the Southeast Wisconsin Regional Plan Commission, you know, they've got a very nice sort of synopsis on environmental corridors, the benefits, and why they should be protected, and the value and benefits that they hold. So I guess unless there's anything else that, you know, other members of the committee kind of wanted, or the task force wanted to add to that, you know, I'd be certainly happy to answer any questions you guys have.
You know, that's a big project, and I appreciate that, and I think it's a good idea when the village started that last year, and it's gonna take time. It isn't gonna be done next year or this year. But then that's, what's good about it is you pick out the worst and try to work each section, and then we can appropriate the village appropriate money to fix these things if they think it's appropriate, you know? That was the outlook at the moment.
Yeah, I agree with that. Pembroke Park, I think that's, a lot of opportunity there, now the pathway through there, and if we can keep it well-regulated by police officers, because there's a lot of hidden trails there, but that, that could be just a goldmine. I mean, it's like, wow, a lot of opportunity there.
I've not been through, I've been up there, but not through, are there a lot of paths already up at Pembroke? Or would we have to actually go in with like a bush thing and cut paths?
Yeah, so there's what I would call very informal trails through there, that have kind of been, you know, kind of cut through there. And really, the goal would be to open up that area. Obviously, you know, being sensitive to adjacent properties and neighbors, things like that, not clearing everything up to their lands. But ideally, it would be to open it up, and then put in some more formalized trails, you know, maybe wood chip trails, things like that, to be able to then, you know, get folks access to those areas.
See, that was formed before, now when a subdivision comes in, they've gotta put that into their program of a trail. So if you're talking about more trails in Pembroke, which isn't a bad idea for people that wanna walk, that's something we'd have to, we'd have to do on our own, I mean, as far as the village or the environmental things.
We've got a ton of people there already, I mean, it's not a matter of bringing people too much there, it's there, just to give them the opportunity to...
No, but I mean, that, those paths got involved in the village because we made the subdivider do it.
Right.
Where now you'd have to, and you'd have to come up, that's what I said, you gotta come up with X number, or what do you wanna do in one year or something? And then it's gonna cost X number of dollars, and then the board's gotta sit down and appropriate it, so that these things get done.
Oh, Mike's got a new lawnmower coming, so.
Have we had a lot of citizens actually asking for more paths up in that area?
I haven't received any formal requests, but as part of what David DeCoursey-Bauer was mentioning, the task force has looked, we have a number of significant trees down below from the developed portion of the park. That'd be really nice to clear around those trees, develop some pathways like we have at the Cottonwood Wayside, so people could explore the natural resources that we have here. And as trustee Landwehr was mentioning about allocating funds, I think the main purpose of the task force wasn't to ask the village board for more money, but to solicit volunteer groups, to solicit business sponsorships of, you know, adopt a park or adopt a trail, there's a lot of opportunities out there, and when we do get volunteer groups to contact us, we could probably focus them in this area and try to develop this. And that's why we're looking for a permanent group to help coordinate getting these volunteers out there, and putting them in the right direction, and not trying to take on too much. If you clear an acre, you have to go back there three, four years to make sure that the invasives aren't coming back all the time. You wanna make sure you get a good handle on that, and then go to the next area.
I think to add on to what Mike is saying, I mean, in this, in this report, we do specify, you know, my understanding was that there was a $10,000 budget that was allocated. We had the option, an opportunity, to essentially spend the bulk of that on having somebody pull together a plan for Pembroke Park, but quite honestly, you know, what we've kind of specified the actions here are fairly straightforward, fairly common sense kind of actions, and really, I think there's two things that I, that we kind of came to the recommendation of. One is, we need to outreach to all the adjacent property owners to each of these areas, to try to get engagement, try to get folks interested, try to get folks engaged. Secondly, is signage in these areas. If you go to a sort of a natural resource area, things like that, anytime they do a project, they put up a sign, say, what's happening here, what's changing, what are we trying to do, how are we trying to improve this particular area? So signage that essentially says what we're doing and why we're doing it. And then the third thing is that there was a lot of discussion about the use of herbicides to control invasive species like buckthorn, and it was the view of essentially the task force in the end, that it would be best if that was handled by a professional organization. In other words, we would pay for somebody to come in after these areas would be cleared, and apply the herbicides to prevent the growth. So those are the three main sort of budget items that were requested out of this task force report and in the recommendations. We don't have exact, you know, kind of costs for all of those things, but, but we do have an idea, you know, within a ballpark of kind of what we're looking at.
See, that buckthorn, we gotta come every year, because we did that in the Tijuana, and we had an area there that we did, and we were in there every year, because if you leave a goal, it's, you never know you're there three years ago, it's all back again.
Yeah, it comes back quick. Real quick.
That's what makes it invasive, there's nothing that...
Stops it.
It stops everything, nothing stops it, other than gasoline. So one thing that I wanted to add was, the, you said that you guys used the budgeted amount?
No, we didn't.
I was gonna, no, that's what I was gonna say, I was gonna say, and it's one thing that I liked is that you didn't, and that I really liked about it is instead of, I think it really goes to show for all of you that were on that, that you didn't just take the money and just go and all of a su, you know, you planned instead of just acting, and I think that that's the best way to go at it, and I think that the way you're going at it, it just sounds, it sounds like the right way to go about it. And I think that even though it might be a challenge, seem like a challenge right now, sometimes it's kind of amazing, once things catch on, how much you end up accomplishing with reaching out to people and with getting help, and as people even get out there and see what they have, you know, in their own village, so I think that that's really good. And I just, I guess I'm really proud of the fact that you guys did, I mean, at the end of the year, you still had that left, and I don't see, as everyone's talking about, and as, as it's been alluded to, if we run this as a task force and do it for two years, and then stop for one, three years have gone by and we're starting back from square one again. So I think that the permanency of it, obviously, I guess there's absolutely an argument for that, is what I'm saying. And I was able to sit in on one of the meetings, and I really liked the amount of thought, and, and the foresight that was put into coming up with how we can start getting towards this problem and attacking it, and making the village more beautiful, so.
And I don't know whether we left, I know you asked to keep that money in, which I think is a good idea, and I don't know, we had to ask Ryan whether or not we took that out, or we really gotta apply for that $10,000?
It was moved forward.
Or did they carry over?
It was moved forward.
That was left in.
Yeah.
So that's in for the, you still got your, to start out with, an 18 to 10 dollars.
I think one of the things that might have come up for them, correct me if I'm wrong, he knows where I'm going. They didn't spend the first.
Yeah.
Do they get that little bit extra, because they're about to go into the working parts that will cost of the budget, that we end up, at some point, voting on something more permanent, and allow that $10,000, another additional $10,000 to be put on top of that $10,000?
Well, you've gotta do that, but like I said, when you want paths and stuff, you gotta pay for it, you gotta come up with a figure. I'm not, I'm not against paths or anything else like that, but when you turn around and say, now we want a path going into Pembroke, from here to there, it's $20,000. Then you gotta think about where we're gonna pick up that $20,000, instead of just adding in another $20,000 into that 10, and then that doesn't cover half a path, then there's $20,000 in there. That's my thinking. I'm not against the idea of doing that stuff, but we should find out what it is and come back to the park board, if it goes through the park, or through the village board and say, we wanna put this path in this year, can you swing it?
Would the paths have, they wouldn't have to be black, tough, would they be wood chip?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
They could be, at this point, they could be dirt, correct?
Either way, it's gonna cost $10,000, it ain't gonna go very far.
They're, they're beautifying, I'm trying to think of the best words, they're beautifying or making more permanent, as we keep on saying, making more permanent, paths that do already exist. However, the paths that exist now are trampled paths, for lack of a better term, where people go through. So if you went up there, you can see that there's some form of a path.
We could just widen them.
It's just not, not only are they gonna trim some of that back, but what it creates is arteries for them to start working from, so, you know, why go into the middle of the woods and start clearing out an acre? You start attacking the paths, or if you have a really old oak tree, you may clear the area around that, and then they maintain that, or at least that's the best. If I'm saying it wrong, correct me, but what it does is creates arteries, because otherwise, if you try to attack the problem, I mean, it's like sitting at the desk when your inbox, you're, well, they don't have a pile of paper. If your inbox has 10,000 emails in it, it's like, why even turn that on? But you fight, so you find manageable ways to start getting at it.
And I think to, you know, trustee Landwehr's point about, you know, kind of the coming back and ongoing maintenance, that's part the reason that the herbicide application, I would recommend that, you know, it was recommended that it be contracted out, so that someone would, you know, be contracted to apply it, come back, and so, and so that would be then, you know, the clearing and the application then would be, you know, we can have a volunteer day, but rather than having to rely on others to do that, it would be something that then would be completed.
Because you run out of volunteers, and we did, because we did that for three, four years, or three years, and then you run out of volunteers, and then it goes back on you. So you can get a contract in there where that guy comes back every March and does that same area. So once we got it done, in two years, we didn't waste our time or energy.
I think part of it is that if you, you know, if you make the initial effort, you do it, you show the, you know, the residents of the village, the area, that, you know, this is, this is what's been done, we need help in the hands to be able to keep, you know, kind of keep this going, keep this amenity going, then hopefully, that then builds that, you know, sense of community engagement in the area, and then we can kind of keep it going.
Well, with the way the budgets are going, and the state doing less and giving us more to do with their money, I'd like to see it as a priority-type thing, let's do one, let's do one right. You know, I guess Pembroke's my favorite, but, you know, with, let's not try to dink around and penny, throw pennies here and there, let's fix one, then we can maintain that and fix another one, and then, you know, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna see us try to do something all over.
Right.
I'd like to see us real specialized or pointed to where we're going at that goal, I think it makes more sense, but, a good report.
And that's what the recommendation is, is let's focus the time and effort on Pembroke Park. There are unique sort of specific incidences of things that are small problems right now in other areas, that we may wanna just address now before they turn into big problems, but aside from that, those sort of one-off little things that could turn bigger if we don't deal with them right away, it would be, you know, focused on Pembroke Park.
I think that's a good idea.
Do we have to reauthorize them?
We already have through the end of the year, but to make them permanent, that's something that we need to talk about.
Okay.
So we're, I guess as it's written, Ryan, if you wanna, Ryan, if you wanna give word, were you around at all when the, the way it's written right now, it just says, accept the environmental corridor and open spaces task force. So I guess I'm gonna move this forward along by saying, what you can do is make a motion that we accept this, but then as a board, we're gonna end up having to talk about what we want to do, after people have had time to kind of go through. It sounds like, I mean, it already sounds like we know where it's, Karen, you've been doing this a long time, what, right? We'll do it another meeting, but right now, we'll just accept it, and then, but at this point, I mean, we can talk about what you guys think. I, in my opinion, I think it's a good idea to really think about making it its own, its own committee or commission.
Yeah, do the, do the paperwork kind of to make it that it isn't appointed every year, one way or another, that the board changes. And as long as that money is still in the budget for you, that amount too, then our next step would be, when it comes to the first year, make it a permanent, so we keep you people involved in it. Otherwise, we drop that, and then we start over again.
They've earned a certain amount that needs to be retained.
Well, you should, you should keep it.
All right. November 27th is the second meeting in November, so I will have it put on that agenda, that we will vote on those things. That'll give everybody enough time to read the report. If there's anything that you have to add, can you please email myself, or you can email every single person, one of the trustees, and we will have it on there, and from there, we will be able to vote, and then can you guys, whoever you want to be here, and yourself... be here, and yourself, if you could be here on the 27th, for us to vote, and that'll get us set up so that, you know, because we only have until the end of, or whatever, the second meeting in December anyways, and we might as well just get it done in November. Why not be proactive?
Well, well, then he's got time, Dave's got time to draw up the correct paperwork.
Right, right.
So then, that'll give...
One thing I do wanna ask you guys is, we can talk about it, but this is our meeting to talk about it, so, uh, do we want this being on, on a third tier? Meaning, do you want it to be underneath the parks? I don't necessarily know if they need to come through the parks board as opposed to coming to the village board.
It wasn't that, the fact that, when this committee was, it was outside of the park.
Right.
You got a park board.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
Now, if they run into something that belongs to the park, they should, it should go to the park.
Right.
And then the park runs it to the village board. But the eagle...
But they can come straight to us if they're doing something with them.
Or either way. But actually, it was, it was formed to start of, in order to, uh, develop somebody that was taking care of the property that wasn't in the park, or wasn't, didn't belong to somebody, you know?
It's to take care of the portions of the park that are in the environmental corridor that aren't already being taken care of by the parks.
And if they see some, if they see some, as you're doing this, and you see something in the park, that should be jacked up to the park, and then they check that out, so that each committee or group stays in it. But that's what the environmental was formed, for all that property that wasn't in some property, you know? Well, I think you're doing a good job with this idea.
So we'll put together thoughts, is everybody good on that?
Yeah.
We'll put together thoughts, and then November 27th, we'll, uh...
Okay, I move we accept the report.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, we accept the report in front of us on the coast board. Any other, any discussion?
Dave Pride, 750 Pembroke Way.
I just wanna clarify one thing. Dave Pride, 750 Pembroke Way.
Thank you.
Um, the task force decided that the environmental corridor, open space task force, would not include our water supply. And I'm just gonna say that our water tables have dropped in Milwaukee, Wauwautosa, and the whole lake country. And Heartland is growing leaps and bounds. Nixon has a splash pad that uses hundreds of thousands of gallons of water. I'm leaving this out there, because I brought this concern. We have two new wells, everybody's knocking at the door from Seatman and everybody else. So it's not in this bellywig, but I'm just bringing it out, because it ain't going away as we grow.
Okay. And are you bringing that up as being on that task force, that that is going to end up being part of the?
I don't know. I'm just saying that from my, from my nickel, and I did push this, and it got shot down, which is fine, we're a group of members.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just bringing it up publicly.
Okay. Well, and, and if it ends up coming to be, that that would be in there now, between now and the 27th, please make sure that we know, 'cause that's not in this right now.
Yeah.
We wouldn't be able to go, vote on it without having, if this isn't the final report, please make sure to let...
So, so we, we discussed at, at length, whether or not to include groundwater issues and the potential for groundwater to be part of the scope that we were talking about here, which was essentially preservation and, you know, kind of maintenance of the environmental corridors and open space areas. It was agreed and voted on in the task force, that that was outside of the scope of what we were trying to achieve in this, um, report. It's not to say that it's not an important issue, it's not to say that it's not valid.
So Dave, you're saying it may come up in the future, but right now, we're just dealing with, is that, okay.
But we decided that it was outside the scope.
I just wanted to make sure it was perfectly clear, especially if there's any viewers or anybody that'd be confused, 'cause those are two, you know, things...
They're two, they're two important, but separate issues.
Right, but it would, yeah, okay.
Mike, just to, to clarify that statement of areas of, everything going down, we've always been assured that our water, our table, water table has remained the same, even with this splash pad.
Right, yes.
We have not had any dips in any of our wells, and we're just building other wells just for additional hu- people coming into Heartland. But our water supply has been intact, and it has not gone down even with this splash pad has. Actually, no really bearing on what we've been doing, so, just to make that clear, that we're, we're not in a water shortage at all, and, uh, our water supply is very, you know, is stable.
Correct.
And it doesn't have any chemicals like our neighbors do.
Okay.
Not to mention anybody.
All right, did we even, uh, we did have discussion, but it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion from anyone? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? It's been carried, we've accepted it.
Thank you very much for your work, guys.
Yeah, thank you guys very much, that is...
Nice job.
Good. Um, okay, so the next, we got tree planting. Consideration of a motion to award one or more contracts for the planting of street trees. Um, make it away.
Thank you very much. Uh, staff contacted three different nurseries, we just received proposals today. Um, the low proposer is Groundskeepers. Um, they have done our street trees for the past few years. They came in at a total of $48,519.2. The next lowest proposal was from Johnson's Nursery, 53, 845, and then Hawks Landscape at 74, 830.
Holy cow.
What this is, is to do the street trees, mainly where the ash and other trees have become deceased and they had to be removed, along with Public Works taking over the planting of the trees in the new subdivisions. The builder of a lot in a subdivision pays a tree fee upfront. The village holds on to those funds, and then in the fall, we bid out for tree planting. That way, we put the trees in, when the lot is occupied, the homeowner there will take care of the trees, as opposed to the developer putting in all the trees during the development of the subdivision, and then either those trees being in the wrong place, or they're not being cared for, and then the mortality rate is very high on that. So we're looking for an award to Groundskeeper, uh, in the amount of $48,519.2.
And how many trees, is that for this year, Mike?
Yes, that's for this year.
This year, it's in the budget.
Yeah.
Yes. Um, I don't have the total here, I have a proposal sheet that has a number of trees, I didn't total them up, I'm sorry, I can get that to you.
Well, I just wanted to check that was this year replaced?
Mike, can you clarify, sorry, I didn't mean to trouble you. Mike, can you clarify, and I know, I mean, obviously, where are we planting these?
Two locations. One in various locations along the street right of ways in the village, where we had pre-existing trees. There are either the ash trees that had to be removed because the ash bore, or other trees that were, had died, and we had to remove the trees. The other locations are the three new subdivisions, Sanctuary, Windrush, Four Winds West, where we have occupied residences that have paid to pay for the trees in advance when they took out their...
Oh, so they paid that?
They paid that in advance.
Okay.
Right.
You don't know that number, do you? On how much, what they pay offsets this, I'm just wondering.
Yes, it does. That's why we calculate how many trees the landscape designer program for the subdivisions. We divide that by an average of the tree price that we've been getting in the prior year contracts, and then we charge the same fee to all the lots, whether they're a corner lot that might get four trees, or they're an internal lot that only might get two trees. That average price is spread out amongst all the lots in the subdivision, because they all benefit from these three trees.
So even the, the one that doesn't show right here, these funds have already actually been taken in, and we're holding on to them now, now they're going back.
Correct.
I just wanted to, it's good for everybody to know that, 'cause it's a big difference.
Quick question. Uh, it says the average tree price installed was around $400.
Yes.
How big of a tree are we talking? Roughly?
Uh, two-inch caliper. So that is four feet high above the ground, two-inch diameter of the tree trunk.
And we do this just so that it gets done quickly, 'cause they'll move through and do it pretty quickly, I'm guessing?
Yes, we do it this time of the year, because the trees are basically dormant, so they don't need an extensive water supply. The contractor will do an initial watering, and if it doesn't go into winter right away, then we can always do more watering, or the homeowners will do the watering.
Okay, all right.
You said the contractor would do the initial watering?
Yes.
I thought we were planting.
We hire the contractor, they provide the trees, they do the planting, they do the initial watering.
Okay, I thought you said the villa, that our guys were doing the planting, I misunderstood.
No.
No, there are times where BBW will do planting, but in this contract, it's for all the...
Okay, I got it.
Yeah, we're overseeing the contract.
Okay, okay.
So the contract is to be approved at the next meeting?
No, this meeting.
Well, you don't, I can't tell you what to make.
I'm moving...
I'm just saying, it's a consideration of a motion.
Yeah, I'm moving, I'm moving approved the contract for the trees for, uh, 2018.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the tree planting con...
What was the final number?
For 48, 519.92.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, 519.92. So it's been moved and seconded, correct, I got a second, right? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? We're planting trees.
Yay.
The motion's carried. Does anyone have any announcements?
Holiday train. Our holiday train.
Yeah, he can't steal all the thunder. He's already got a lot of thunder.
Trustee Walsh, I just wanted to give you an update, Dave Dean, the fire department. Uh, update on our pizza, first ever pizza fundraiser that we held October 11th and 12th. And, uh, during the pizza delivery, those two evenings, the Heartland Fire Department delivered 97 pizzas and 56 wings to 46 different homes here in Heartland. The firefighters tested 104 smoke detectors, distributed, and I'll have, I can put this, compile this all for you to import, distributed 62 batteries and set up appointments to return and install smoke detectors to three homes. Unfortunately, we were to capacity both evenings, sold out, we were doing like a pizza every three minutes, and, uh, we couldn't keep up with the demand, so I apologize to all the people in the village that tried to order pizzas and did not, were not able to get through. I know Wednesday was sold out by four o'clock, and Thursday was sold out on Wednesday, so, um, we had overwhelming, uh, uh, response to our fundraising efforts, and, uh, we are continuing to fundraise from various events to offset the village's cost of a new Lucas, Lucas chest compression tool for the ambulance. And I brought one along this evening, just to show you what we're talking about, 'cause it's, I think, for me, it's nice to put the item, um, what exactly it is. So with your permission, I would set it up on the table, and I'll just give you a little quick demonstration. We're very fortunate to have all of our police department members and first responders CPR trained, so that helps a lot. This will relieve one of the hands of the...
You can access this. Take my...
So you wanna put up a drive-through pizza at the firehouse?
Pizza window.
I just don't know how to, how to get that on the screen.
So, just wanted to show you, this is the, the device here, which doesn't come for the cheap price tag.
How many do we have?
We have one right now in one of our ambulances, and we'd like to get another one in our second. We've had great luck with it, uh, we've saved numerous lives with it, as we have worked through the process of, um, you'll see how much nicer it works compared to the chest compressions that we normally do. We did have a save, um, by the railroad tracks not too long ago. So this device, where we would normally be doing chest compressions by ourselves, and then, and then doing breaths.
Other way. There you go. No, right there, then the camera can see it, I was just wanting to make sure.
Correct, perfect. Um, we'll turn the device on, let us know it's on. I'll adjust the plunger to the chest, it automatically checks the depth, and we'll start compressions however I, when I want them to, and we'll just put, today, we'll put 30 compressions to two breaths, and the machine will start doing compressions, which will free up one of the hands of the EMTs to get an IV started, and hopefully in the future, administer some drugs. It'll go 30 times, it'll pause for us to give two ventilations.
Do you adjust the pressure?
Yes, so automatically, when I set the nose down onto the chest, it'll automatically check the depth.
That's what I was doing.
Yep. So very proficient, you can do it a lot better. If any of you's taken CPR class, you understand, reduce 30 compressions, and, uh, and ready to call for a change pretty quickly. So, we're excited to continue to fundraise for this item, uh, to help offset the cost of the village.
It's a simple thing.
Uh, like I said, it doesn't come at a cheap price tag, it's two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Wow.
I've seen situations where it's one, small town, USA, up north.
Sure.
I actually, uh, was in a situation where it's all volunteer up there, so the person came, and they got there quick, and they were going and going and going, and, but the people there at the time, including myself, weren't trained, and he was begging, does anyone know CPR? Because, I mean, when you get to that fifth minute, it is, it's everything you got to keep on going.
And this item will, uh, last over an hour doing compressions.
Okay.
They're rechargeable batteries?
Rechargeable, correct.
Awesome.
And is that almost guaranteed to crack a rib?
Nope, this one, you're more apt to crack a rib doing it, uh, by yourself, because as the ambulance is bouncing down the road, and you turn, they turn, they start, they go back, you know, you're, you're bouncing around the back, and, uh, we're much more apt to break a rib.
Okay.
During actual compressions, manual compressions by hand.
That just looked awesome, dude.
So then again, that adjusts it, a person, I gave you a look.
Yeah, if it's an infant, then I would take, you know, this, it knows by the, the depth that I set this down, um, it'll, it'll adjust right there, because it has a sensor on the back plate and the front, so it'll measure the, the depth of the body, and then, how many inches is it for an adult?
How many inches?
Yeah, depth, how much, how deep do we wanna go?
More than a child.
You just took our...
Three?
No, two, two inches is, two to two and a half for adults, so...
That's awesome, cool.
Just wanted to share that with the village, and I really wanted to give a thank you to Pat Enter, uh, from Enter's Sports Grill. Mike, can you get the mic? Mike?
Got it. Thank you.
He's got a new job.
He was trying to get on the camera.
As, as his captain just sits there laughing, and she's like, oh, how about that?
Uh, special thank you to Pat Enter, uh, from Enter's Sports Grill, who graciously let us disrupt his kitchen for two evenings as we did the pizza delivery, uh, did burn my hands doing the dishes that evening, um, and thanks his staff, and always thanks the village for the support that shows the fire department. We do a lot of public activities, and, um, I never wanna see a child or anyone be hurt because they didn't have a smoke detector, working smoke detector in their homes, so, even if you didn't get a pizza, check your smoke detector, make sure they're working. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You didn't tell me it was show and tell, so I didn't bring anything along, but I wanted to tell you, the holiday train is coming, December 3rd, 5:45 PM. Expect the road to be closed, Cottonwood Avenue will be closed for about two hours prior to the arrival. Also, the arrival is just an anticipated arrival. Last year, they were approximately half hour to 45 minutes late, so the anticipated arrival is 5:45. They're usually here for about 45 minutes or so.
It's a little shorter this year.
Yeah, and they do a show, and it should be right at Cottonwood Avenue. But December 3rd, if you need details, it'll be on the Chamber website, and will be on the village's website as well.
You're gonna close that from Bahate Drive down?
We close it right at, uh, Park Avenue, West and East Park, down to Industrial Drive by Heartland Service there.
It's all over Facebook too, but one thing that's going on, I'm just going to add, is that we're going to really want to be on our game this year, as people are trying to encroach on Heartland's little gem of the holiday train, which isn't just for Heartland, but for so long, it's just been Heartland. And if you pay attention to the news, there are other communities that are pounding them with emails saying they want them, and so we want to be on our best to make sure that we just keep having it. And the best place to come and see the holiday train is Heartland.
I would also add that the Chamber has done a lot of work, and they are actually looking to, they're going to be doing some more work for this to make it an even better event, and that the proceeds are for the food pantries. It's not a moneymaker for anyone, it's just for the food pantries.
Awesome. While you're, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
While you're here, one of the announcements I was going to make is that trick or treat is coming.
Yes.
That is on, obviously, it's on the 31st, but it's from 6 to?
Eight.
Eight. So people will want to be very careful that night.
And along the same lines.
The business trick or treat.
The business trick or treat on October 26th, also from 6 to 8.
Yes.
Will be happening, so people should use caution in the area, and also bring their kids out for that as well.
And business trick or treat is downtown, where the trick or treat night is everywhere, and obviously, there's three-year-olds and four-year-olds that are eating candy and having a good time, so let's watch out for them.
And they can also pick their bags up at the Chamber. We're going to have bags they can use that are pre-filled with a few little treats.
Awesome, awesome. Anything else?
That's it.
That's it. We also have, the fall leaf collection is going on and will continue to go on until November 21st, I believe. Yeah, it'll run through Tuesday, November 21st, so it's, they make a sweep once a week. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but once a week, they're making a sweep through the village to collect leaves. So make sure they go out there, that is not supposed to be sticks, it's not supposed to be pine needles, it's supposed to be leaves, that other stuff, you got to take down on your own to our.
Correct, just leaves. Keep them away from the curb inlets, because it still rains, and we have to get the water off the road. But yes, just leaves, no dog waste, none of that stuff, dispose of other things properly. We still have our public works yard open up for recycling and dropping off of yard waste.
When's that close then, though?
It will close just before Thanksgiving.
Okay.
The Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
And last, I guess, if anybody else has something, chime in, but I guess, it's my understanding, I'm going to be upset with myself if I'm wrong, but I'm going to say it anyways for people that are trying to plan, the holiday train is coming, and it's on a Sunday. It's my understanding that the Friday before the holiday train will be the tree lighting in Heartland.
I'm looking.
It's my understanding.
December 1st.
That that is.
December 1st.
That's correct. So anyway, that's all I have. If anybody else has any other, anybody, any, any other announcements?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.
I didn't know if we could do that without Rick.